Oh, there we go, yeah. Perfect, yep. Does this work? Oh, it does. Yay. I am just, I'm wearing the lapel mic mainly for the recording portion of this because we are live streaming this and then recording this session so we can upload it to our city website, the elections page of our website later on if you want to revisit this again. But, so on that note, if you have questions as we go along, raise your hand. Don't wait till the very end because then we'll have to go back like 70 slides to help answer that question. But we do have handheld mics that we will pass out. Again, that's so we can record the audio and that question can be answered for someone else down the road if they want to watch the recorded version of this. So, thank you very much for coming this evening to spend a little bit of time with us to talk 2017 local election here in the city of Meridian. My name is CJ Coles. I think I know a good majority of everyone in this room. I'm the city clerk for the city of Meridian. We also have Michelle Hill over here. She's our deputy city clerk. And then we have Bill Neri. He's our city attorney. He's over there. And J.C. Holman, the esteemed former city clerk of the city of Meridian for eight years, seven years, something like that. So, she's our support services director now. So she's here to make sure that I don't give you false information. That's what Bill's here to make sure as well, that I don't tell you to break any election laws, so. So, real quick, we're going to do an overview of the responsibilities of the city clerk, the county clerk, because we have consolidated elections now, and their role. And we'll go through a bit of the history of that, and then how to file for candidacy, what that looks like. And then we will also spend some time on campaign finance reporting and how that works, what the deadlines are for that, and go through some of that. So, the responsibilities of the city clerk there, you can see, is to make available the candidate filing forms, which we have actually conveniently on the back table. So the declaration of candidacy is on the back table for you to take. We also have on the back table an election calendar, some candidate FAQs. Now, there is also a sign-in sheet if you would like to sign that and put your email address down so that we can push out election information to your email as we go along through this process. Now, the other part of the city clerk's responsibility is we need to legally publish the information about the election and the candidate filing period, which starts August 28th, opens up at 8:00 a.m. You file with the city clerk's office, which is just right down this hallway. It's open for two weeks. It ends 5:00 p.m. September 8th. So from August 28th, 8:00 a.m., through 5:00 p.m. September 8th. The responsibilities of the county clerk is they do pretty much the coordination of the election or the administration, the administrative part of the election. They print out the ballots, they publish the notice of election and a sample ballot, in-person and male absentee voting, selecting the polling places, and election staff running the polling places on Election Day and counting ballots. The city clerk used to do that for city elections, but back in 2009, I think, consolidated elections happened where that is all run through the county. Even at the local level, the county handles the administrative portion of elections. We will have, just as an FYI, we will have early voting here at City Hall the two weeks prior to Election Day. This location has become very popular for early voting within the county, so that will be available in this building on the other side of these doors essentially, the two weeks prior to Election Day. And the responsibilities of the county commissioners is to canvass the votes and establish election precincts. So the candidate filing process, so every candidate must file a declaration of candidacy. Again, we've got forms on the back if you'd like to take those with you. That form says that you meet the qualifications to be on the ballot, and you have to declare which seat you are running for at that time. Seats 2, 4, and 6 are what are up on the ballot this year. You have to declare which seat you're running for at that time. It also must be accompanied by either a $40 nonrefundable filing fee or a petition signed by at least five qualified city electors. If you choose to go the petition route, what you'll need to do is take the petition to aid a county elections before you come see us. They have to verify that those that have signed the petition are qualified city electors. They will then give you a notarized, or a stamped, excuse me, a stamped letter that says, yes, we verified these electors are qualified. They will give that to you. You bring the petition and that stamped letter to our office to file with your declaration of candidacy. We cannot accept it, if you're doing the petition, we can't accept it without that stamped letter from the county. Oh, hold on, I got to get you a mic.
CJ, what is a qualified city elector?
Good question. Thank you. A qualified city elector is somebody that lives within the city of Meridian and they have registered to vote. And they voted once, at least once, within the past four years. If you haven't voted in any election in the past four years, you fall off of the election rolls essentially at the county. And you have to reestablish, you have to reregister to vote. So a qualified city elector is someone at least 18 years old, a resident of the city of Meridian, and has voted at least once within the past four years.
CJ, would it be a good idea for somebody going that route instead of paying the $40 to get more than five signatures on there?
It could be a good idea. If one of those individuals is not a qualified city elector and you only have four, then you've got to go back out and you've got to get a fifth. So, five is the minimum you have to have of qualified city electors, but you don't have to stop at five. You can have 10, 15, 20. It's up to you, however many you'd like. Any other questions about qualified city electors? I'm kidding. There's qualified city electors. And this is also what your qualifications need to be, to be on the ballot. At least 18, a U.S. citizen, the candidate's pri, oh, excuse me, the candidate's primary residence must be within the city. So as a candidate, your primary residence has to be within the city. And the candidate must be a resident of the city for at least 30 days before their declaration is submitted to the city clerk. That third bullet point, the address being within the city. I don't know if any of you saw the news recently about the city of Nampa. One of their city council members, it was an appointed city council member, had a Nampa address. They were appointed to fill a vacancy on the council and for several months served on the city council. It became, the council and the mayor became aware that, and that individual, that individual actually didn't know that she didn't live within the city of Nampa. She lived within the county, but she had a Nampa address. So, what we need to do is verify, is the city clerk's responsibility to verify, when you file your declaration of candidacy, that you are on the voter rolls, number one, but that your address is within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian. And I would suggest that if you are planning to run for city council, that you verify before you file your declaration of candidacy that your address is really within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian. We have within the city, within our area of impact, several properties, several neighborhoods that are what we call enclaves of the city, where the city completely surrounds that property or that neighborhood, or is touching that property or neighborhood. But that property or neighborhood hasn't yet been annexed into the city. And they can have a Meridian address, and it will have a Meridian address, but it isn't within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian. So those individuals that live at those properties, one, are unable, unqualified, to run for city council, and two, they can't vote in city elections. So it's worth your time and your while just to verify that your property is within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian. We will do that when you turn your forms in to us. You won't leave the office until we have verified that for you when you turn in your declaration of candidacy. But again, it's wise to just double-check to make sure your property is really within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian before you run. And we can help you do that if you're interested in that. I already talked about the period for declarations of candidacy. Again, Monday, 8:00 a.m. August 28th, we'll be in that office, waiting for the doors to be beaten down for everyone filing their declarations of candidacy. And then it closes Friday, September 8th, at 5:00 p.m. That is set by state statute, that is set by law. We cannot accept your form before 8:00 a.m. on August 28th, and we cannot accept your form after 5:00 p.m. on September 8th. So the process for candidates. Your name will appear on the ballot exactly as it is written on your declaration of candidacy. You can use initials for your first or middle name. A nickname can be used, but put in quotes. The example there, Jeffrey Scooter Owens. The declaration of candidacy must be signed by the candidate and notarized by an Idaho notary. The petition of candidacy must be signed by the person soliciting the petition signatures and notarized by an Idaho notary. And the city clerk, myself, and Michelle, we can notarize the forms for you when you submit them. Petition signatures. So they must be at least 18 years of age, and they must be an Idaho resident. You can't have your friends and family that don't live within the state of Idaho sign your petition. They must be an Idaho resident. Again, must be taken to the county clerk's office and verified by them before you bring it back to our office. So before accepting the nominating forms, the city clerk, like I told you, we will ensure that the candidate is registered to vote in the city, so a qualified city elector, and that the candidate's residence, primary residence, is within the corporate limits of the city of Meridian. When you turn those forms in to us, before you leave, we will have verified that for you. So why do we need to do that? The individual may have been purged from the registration rolls. Again, you have to have voted at least once within an election within the past four years to still be on the registered voter rolls. And the individual needs to reregister. Again, if you've fallen off the rolls, you need to reregister before you submit the forms to us, the declaration of candidacy, or any other campaign forms. If you're interested in being a write-in candidate, the deadline to do that is Tuesday, October 10th, having submitted that form again to the city clerk's office, if you're interested in that. What's interesting is a lot of people don't understand that write-in candidates actually have to have submitted forms and declared their intent to be a write-in candidate. You can't write in anyone you would hope would run for office, or you would like to have won the election on a write-in, on a ballot. The write-in candidate actually has to have been submitted with the city clerk and with the county. Withdrawing candidacy. If you submit a declaration of candidacy in that two-week window, and let's say a few days go by, or a couple of weeks go by, and you decide, you know what, maybe campaigning isn't for me, maybe city elections aren't for me, I have no more intention of being on the city council, the deadline to withdraw is Monday, September 25th. How you do that? There is a form on our website. It's called the Declaration to Withdraw Your Candidacy. You have to fill that out. You have to have it notarized by an Idaho notary and submitted and turned in to the city clerk's office so that your name will not appear on the ballot. Couple of questions. Can a candidate sign their own petition of candidacy? Yes. A candidate can sign their own petition for candidacy. And can candidates campaign on Election Day? Yes, you can campaign on Election Day, but you cannot do it within 100 feet of a polling place.
One thing I was going to mention on that last point, there's actually an arc, and I have it in my office, and I'll, they have it too, so we can post it on the website, showing where the front of the building, because this will be a polling place prior for pre-voting. So there's an area out here that is beyond 100 feet. So if you want to campaign, you have to be outside of that 100-foot radius of the front door of City Hall as well. So we'll have that on the website so you can see that.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions about the process up to this point? Okay, great. We'll move right along. Campaign finance reporting, everyone's favorite bedtime reading topic. So this part of the presentation will go over reporting basics, reporting deadlines, which are very important, contribution limits, and there's some FAQs at the very end that have been compiled. So the sunshine law is campaign finance law. It's public disclosure law for campaign financing. There are currently 33 cities that fall under this law, a population of 5,000 or more. Meridian just barely met that requirement to be one of those cities in Idaho. Disclosure requirements. So when does a person become a candidate? And this is more of a process question, really. But a person becomes a candidate for city office when one of these happens. One, you receive contributions, you spend money, or you reserve space or facilities with the intent to promote candidacy for an election. At that point, if you reserve space or facility with the intent of promoting your candidacy, you've become a candidate for city election. Or you announce publicly or file to run for city office. Why does this matter? When a person becomes a candidate, that is the point at which they need to certify their campaign treasurer. Candidates are required to certify with the city clerk a campaign treasurer who is responsible for all of the campaign finance reporting for your campaign. And that is the C-1 form. I have copies on the back table if you wish to take with you to fill out, and if you want to file a C-1 form to certify your campaign treasurer. You cannot receive any contributions for a campaign without having certified a treasurer. You can't spend any money in association with campaigning or the intent to promote a campaign without certifying a treasurer. So that is the first step, really, in becoming a candidate for city office. These are the three forms that are the most commonly used and really the most important in campaign finance. The C-1, the treasurer form. The C-2, which has, it sounds like, oh, it's a one-page C-2, but really, the C-2 has a lot of pages that come after it. That's where the itemized and all of the reporting happens, is on the C-2 form. And the C-5 form is used for a 48-hour notice. There's a particular window, we'll get into that, where you have to notice contributions of $1,000 or more. So certifying the treasurer, that's the first step, like I said, in becoming a candidate. That is, that last bullet point, candidates can certify their treasurer and start raising and spending money long before you file a declaration of candidacy. So we do currently have on file four individuals who have certified campaign treasurers, have submitted C-1 forms with the city. That doesn't have to wait until August 28th or September 8th when you file a declaration of candidacy. Again, certifying a treasurer is the first step in becoming a candidate for city election. And if you plan on spending, raising, doing anything in association with campaigning, that's the first step, and you can do that now. You could have done that yesterday, you could have done that months ago. Who may serve as a treasurer? Any person who is registered to vote in the state of Idaho can serve as a campaign treasurer. The candidate can serve as their own campaign treasurer if they wish to do so. And a person may serve as a treasurer for multiple candidates and/or political committees. So once a treasurer is locked in with a candidate, they wish to serve as a treasurer on another campaign, they can do that. Designating a new treasurer. So if the treasurer resigns from a campaign or is removed from the campaign, a new treasurer needs to be certified immediately with the city clerk's office. Because once the treasurer is either removed or resigns from the campaign, the campaign needs to cease spending any money, receiving any contributions, or doing any political campaigning associated with, obviously, with the campaign, because there's no treasurer on the form, oh, yeah, on file with the city clerk's office. So if that happens, it's important that, if a treasurer again is removed or resigns, that immediately with the city clerk's office, a new treasurer is submitted, or is, yeah, submitted into our office. Responsibilities of the treasurer. They keep up-to-date accounts of the contributions and expenditures for the campaign. Again, they are responsible for all the campaign finance reporting that happens with the campaign. They keep all the records for at least one year after the election. This is important because if there are any discrepancies with the campaign finance reports that are turned in, then it is the job of me and Michelle and our office to work with you as the candidate, and then the treasurer, to make sure that those discrepancies are corrected. So it's important that the records are retained for at least a year after the election. And they must file the required reports in a timely manner with all the necessary information. The timely manner is important because there are actual hard and fast dates and deadlines that reports have to be filed by. And we'll talk a little bit more about those dates, but the city clerk is not authorized to extend any grace periods, if you will, on those deadlines. If there's a deadline and the report isn't done, we can't say, okay, we'll give it to us in two days or in three days. There's no authority given to the city clerk to offer anything like that. Continued, they need to obtain, or the campaign needs to obtain, the name, mailing address, and date for any person or entity that contributes $50 or more during the calendar year to the campaign. This will be itemized on the C-2 form that you will submit. They must obtain a receipt or canceled check for any expenditure from the campaign of $25 or more. Again, these will be itemized on your C-2 form. So any money received, $50 or more, to the campaign, needs to be itemized. Anything spent, $25 or more, will need to be itemized. And they must transmit to the state comptroller for deposit in the public school fund any anonymous contribution of more than $50. The campaigns cannot accept anonymous contributions. They have to be reported, like that first bullet point states. If it's $50 or more, it's anonymous, it needs to go to the state public education fund. Elements of campaign finance reporting. You've got contributions, the money you take in, expenditures, obviously, the money you're spending as a campaign, in-kind contributions, loans, and credit cards, and debt. So what's a contribution? Money, cash, or check that is given to the campaign. Contributions of the candidate's personal funds. So the candidate can personally either loan the campaign money, or can spend, or give the campaign money, excuse me, on their behalf. So there are limits to money you can receive from an individual. That's $1,000, no more than $1,000 can be received from a single individual or a single entity to your campaign. However, if you, as the candidate, would like to donate to your campaign, you can donate as much money as you'd like to your campaign. You can loan as much money as you'd like to your campaign. The campaign can pay back your loan, obviously, but if you just wish to write that off personally, you can donate $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 to your campaign. Spouses and children, however, are subject to the limits of contribution. Only $1,000 can be contributed to a campaign from a spouse, or children as well, family members. But the candidate personally has the authority and ability to give unlimited funds to the campaign if they so wish.
If a candidate had, has remaining funds from a prior campaign of a different kind, state legislative race, is he or she subject to the limitations of moving the funds that were remaining from the prior campaign to the current campaign of a different kind?
Good question. I don't know if I know the answer to that question.
No, we've had that happen several times. That is already an open campaign account that adhered to those limits when that money was taken in. So you can just take that over and use it for your campaign account here. So no, it already complied with the limits when the money was received the first time.
Thank you. In-kind contributions, or goods or services furnished to the campaign for a less-than-fair-market value. We'll go into that in a little bit of detail later. Loans from any source, including the candidate's personal fund, that is considered a contribution, and pledged contributions, not yet received but pledged. And those are listed, those get listed on a campaign finance form. Reporting contributions. So unitemized contributions. How this works is you report the number and the total amount of contributions less than $50. Itemized contributions, like I said, are those contributions of $50 or more that list the name, the date, and the address of the individual that provided those contributions. There it is. The amount of the contribution, total contributions from contributor for calendar year-to-date, and the date of the contribution received by the treasurer. What is an expenditure? This includes any payment or gift of money or anything of value that the campaign spends. And the treasurer must report all expenditures made during the reporting period by or on behalf of the candidate. So how do those get reported? Again, report the number and total amount of expenditures less than 25, that's unitemized. Itemized is $25 or more, must be reported individually, that's what itemized is, on C-2 Schedule B. Like I said, C-2 has Schedule B, C, D, E. Reporting in-kind contributions. Oh, there's Schedule C. In-kind contributions are goods or services provided to a candidate for less than fair-market value. For instance, a printer provides the brochures for the candidate at no cost. The name and address of the business needs to be listed as the contributor. The name and address of the printing business is listed under an expenditure, and the fair-market value of the brochures is listed as the amount for both the contributor and the expenditure. So you have it written in two places. That's how in-kind contributions get reported. Loans are on Schedule D. The treasurer must report the name and mailing address of the lenders, the balance of loans at the end of the previous reporting period, if there was an amount there, the amount of loans received during the current reporting period, interest accrued during the reporting period, repayments during the reporting period, and the balance outstanding at the end of the reporting period. So loans get tracked throughout the entire cycle of the loan on the campaign finance form. And those numbers, when they get turned in to the clerk's office, it's our responsibility to take, if you have an old form or a form from a previous reporting period, we take a look at those loan balances, we take a look at the current balance in the current reporting period, and we have to match all those numbers up and make sure that they equal each other. Contribution limits, I talked about this a little bit, is $1,000 per election from a single individual or an entity. Again, there's no limit on personal funds from the candidate. Reporting deadlines, these become important. So the first reporting deadline for city elections is October 10th. That period, or that report will cover from the date the treasurer was certified with the city clerk's office through September 30th. So whatever date you certify your treasurer is the date that report began, and it goes through September 30th. Must be filed within our office by 5:00 p.m. on October 10th. The second is the seven-day pre-general report. So this starts October 1st, runs through October 22nd, and is filed in our office on October 31st, or no later, excuse me, on October 31st, 5:00 p.m. The 48-hour notice of contributions and loans of $1,000 or more. So this starts October 23rd and goes through November 4th. So within 48 hours of receiving a contribution or a loan of $1,000 or more, but I don't know why I have on more, or more on there, it's $1,000, you have to submit to the city clerk's office Form C-5. Oh, you need a microphone.
It's just because you can loan more than that amount yourself, and if you loan over $1,000 to yourself and that, $1,000 or more, you do have to report that, so.
That makes sense. Thank you. The next report will be the 30-day post-general that starts October 23rd and goes through November 17th. The due date on that report to the clerk's office is December 7th. And then an annual report is filed with the city clerk's office. As a new candidate, that starts November 18th through December 31st, the deadline for that report into the city clerk's office is January 31st. Yeah, December 7th. Yeah. You're welcome. With an annual report, in a current city election, you can see the current seats that are up, November 18th through December 31st. For the seats that aren't up, or if you keep a campaign account open throughout the year, then it's the entire, an annual report covers the entire year if it's not an active seat or an active election. But for an active seat, that's the reporting period. And again, January 31st. Once the election is over, and once the campaign is over, if you would like to terminate the campaign account, you can do so on Form C-2. There is a box to check that says, I am terminating my campaign account, this is my last report, and turn that in. However, a campaign account cannot be terminated, we can see to end there's, you know, marking yes on the box, but a campaign account cannot be terminated until the account balance in the account is zero. So you've either expended all the money that you've received as a candidate on campaign and election-associated activities, or if there's money left over, you wish to terminate your account and you want your account to be zero, the account balance to be zero, you can donate leftover campaign funds to the public school education fund, you can use your campaign account, and we'll talk more in the FAQs about what you can use that money for, but you can give to other campaigns. There are ways to get the account balance down to zero if you're, if you decide, yep, I want my account balance to be zero, and I want to terminate my account. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. I guess we'll talk about, no. Leftover funds, school booster group, veterans group, other charitable organizations. You just can't use it to go by personal things, though. It has to be used for charitable purposes. Penalty for late filing of reports is, by law, $50 per day until the report is filed. So come October 11th, or come November 1st, if the deadline is the 31st, it could be $50 a day. However, the city clerk can waive penalties if it is determined that the late filing was not willful. Fines, however, must be imposed if the report is not filed within five days after receiving written notice from the city clerk. I mean, actually, mail-in. written notice from the city clerk, me actually mailing your campaign a letter saying, "I need your report." In most cases, the deadline, perhaps you, as a candidate, aren't well aware of the deadline, or the treasurer isn't well aware of the deadline. We're going to reach out to you as the candidate and to your treasurer to say, "Deadline's coming up. Make sure to file your report on time." And if there is communication back and forth saying, "Here's the situation, here's what's going on," we're going to work with you. But again, the law doesn't allow the city clerk to say, "Oh, yeah, you've got two extra days to get it together." What we suggest, and there's a slide on this, but I'm just going to get to it now, and maybe it's the next one, I can't remember the order, but if you know that the account balances aren't matching up, if your treasurer knows that the account balances aren't matching up, file the report. And then let us know that you're going to be filing an amended report. At least we know that you're working on what's going on with the accounts, that you're working on solving the issue, and we can help work through that with you. But file the report, even if you know the account balances aren't matching up necessarily, file the report. We have the information and we can work with you to help get that report where it needs to be. In most cases, it's not going to take very long to do that. It'll be a few dollars here and a few dollars there, and we can help glance that over and say, "Oh, here's the issue, here's what it is." But if you know there's going to be an issue, communicate with our office so that we can help you at least file the report and then help you with the next step to get it amended and get that filed as well. Attribution requirement. This is where a lot of candidates get tripped up in a local campaign election. So you've seen the signs, you've heard the advertisements paid for by Joe Smith for City Council. You are required, as a candidate, for anything that is printed or distributed to have the attribution, Joe Smith for City Council paid for by, or Joe Green Treasurer, paid for by John Smith of City Council, Joe Green Treasurer. The attribution must be on signs and other literature. However, there are some exceptions to the attribution requirement. Things that you cannot conveniently put a little slogan on. Buttons, you're not going to fit a slogan on a button because you just have three words on a button. Or a pen that you're handing out, or bumper stickers, small items upon which the attribution cannot be conveniently printed. However, if it can be printed, it needs to be printed. We get a lot of phone calls, and Bill and I may talk about this a little bit, but we get a lot of phone calls of people saying, "I saw this sign out there, and there was no attribution on there. Go after this candidate," or "Who distributed this? We need to know who distributed this anonymous flyer about something or someone or what have you." Idaho law, campaign law requires that the attribution be, if it can conveniently be printed, that it must be printed on literature, any sort of campaign advertisement that is handed out or pushed out to the public. Want to add anything to that?
I would just concur with CJ. That's probably the calls that we get the most are regarding the material that's out there. So be sure your name's on it, be sure it's clear whose it is, because that's the generally number-one thing. The second one I know you'll get to is signs. Please don't put them everywhere. I mean, I understand that there's a reason, and I get it, but be sure wherever you put them, you have permission to have them there. Because that's the second-most complaint that we get, is these signs are in somebody's yard, they're complaining. These signs cost you money, and they will probably just throw them away, and so you don't want to do that. So make sure wherever you put them, you have permission to be there, make sure they're not obstructing the view corridor in a right-of-way, make sure they're not in any property that belongs to the city or any public property. So those are the things that we get the most complaints about. And most of the time, if we get those, I'm usually just going to call you and say, "Somebody called about this sign, it's too close to the road, could you move it to another spot?" You know, or "There's something on there, or it's obstructing something." But again, it costs you money, and the last thing I want to do is have somebody throw your stuff away. So just make sure there's attribution to it and that it's in a place where it can be.
Filing of written complaints. The city clerk is obligated to investigate any complaints that have been written about candidates breaking campaign law, essentially, what Bill was just talking about. The form is the L-5 form. We make that available to anyone that actually wants to supply a written complaint about they believe that the law has been broken in campaigning, just as an FYI. Do we have any questions up to this point before we go through some of the most commonly asked questions? Or is it frequently asked questions? So should a candidate open a new checking account to prevent commingling their personal funds with campaign funds? Yes. Having a separate account makes it easier to keep track of how campaign funds are spent. It's not required by law that a separate campaign account be opened, but come reporting period and you're going through bank statements, trying to decipher, "What was this $15 for? What was this expenditure of $30 at the donut shop? Was that campaign-related? Was that, what was that?" So it's just easier to track all the funds if you open up a separate campaign account. Is it required that the campaign treasurer be an accountant or a bookkeeper? No, it is not required that they be an accountant or a bookkeeper, but they should at least be familiar with numbers and basic accounting math, adding, subtracting, that would be good. Are corporations and labor unions allowed to contribute to candidates and political committees? Yes. The Sunshine Law allows corporations to contribute. Is there a limit on how much money a candidate can receive from a single contributor? I think I've said this three times, if not five. Yes. $1,000 in a local election is the maximum that a single contributor can give to a campaign. Is there a limit on the amount of personal funds? Talked about this also. No. There's no contribution limit to personal funds from a candidate to the campaign. Does the $1,000 contribution limit apply to spouses and family members? We talked about this as well. Yes. Spouse and family members are subject to the same contribution limit as everyone else. Are in-kind contributions restricted by the contribution limit? Yes, they are. So again, you're reporting the in-kind contributions at fair market value, and they are subject to the same $1,000 contribution limit as if someone was giving cash or check to the Are candidates required to report the amount of their personal funds? Yes, they are. All personal funds or loans from the candidate must be reported on the campaign finance forms. However, it's not necessary to report personal funds expended to pay the candidate filing fee of $40. That you don't have to report. If the candidate purchases office supplies, meals, gas, et cetera with their personal funds, may they be reimbursed from campaign funds? Yes, you can be reimbursed by the campaign, again, if these activities are associated with the campaign. It's C-2 Schedule B. You put the candidate's name, the address, are listed as a recipient, along with the date of the reimbursement and the purpose and the amount. Again, these need to be campaign-associated activities in order to be reimbursed. And there must be a brief statement identifying that this is a reimbursement for the purchase of whatever the purchase was, and the date of the original transaction for the campaign. Credit card transactions, how are those reported? Credit card purchases are considered debt to the campaign and are reported on Schedule E of the C-2 schedule. They're considered debt. So the report includes the name and address of the creditor, the balance of debt at the end of the last reporting period, the amount of new debt incurred during the current reporting period. Again, we're tracking debts and loans throughout the entire life of the campaign, repayment of debt during the reporting period, and debt outstanding. Each creditor is listed in Schedule E and must have an accompanying Schedule E-1, again, if you're using credit cards. It includes the date, the name and address of the business from which the goods or services were purchased, the purchase of the expenditure, and the amount of the expenditure. So when you're using credit cards, you have to use Schedule E, and then you have to use an associated E1 for each business from which you used your credit card to purchase something for the campaign. If a treasurer is unable to balance a report, what should be done? The report should still be filed, like I talked about, in a timely manner with the notation that an amendment will be forthcoming. We want to see the report. We want to know that you, as a candidate, are doing your due diligence, and so is the treasurer. Again, if an amendment needs to be made, then amendment needs to be made, or an amendment needs to be filed. But we want to see the form by the date that it is due. Does a report need to be filed if the candidate has not received any contributions or spent any money during the reporting period? And the answer is yes. There is a little checkbox on there that says, "No contributions or expenditures during the reporting period." You check that box, but you still have to file the form saying that, and verifying and certifying that nothing was spent and nothing was received during the reporting period. And that's the only time, you only have to use one page of C-2. Otherwise, it's a lot more pages. The 48-hour notice requirement, does it pertain to contributions of a candidate's personal funds and in-kind contributions? The answer is yes. Again, this requirement applies to all types of contributions, including those from personal funds and in-kind contributions and loans. So the 48-hour noticing, whether it's your personal funds, whether you receive it from somewhere else, still have to report it. What date a receipt should be entered for a contribution? The date of the check or the date that the treasurer received it? And that's the date that you, as the campaign, that the treasurer receives the contribution. That's the date that should be reported. Must campaign finance disclosure reports be faxed or emailed to the city clerk? So several years ago, the Secretary of State and the legislature changed how campaign finance reporting was done for state candidates. They set up an online portal, an online system for state candidates, to which state candidates had to log into this online portal and submit their documents electronically. That wasn't the case for city elections. We could, at that point, still take in documents, a hard copy in our office, campaign finance documents, hard copy, and we could still accept mailed copies of the campaign finance documents. However, this year, that has changed. The legislature is requiring that for local elections, we receive campaign finance documents electronically. There's no portal like the state has, but they are asking that we receive them via email or fax. We are not to accept, it's actually prohibited by the law to accept them hard copy if they're mailed to our office. And the reason for that is, actually, in southeastern Idaho, they changed, the USPS changed the routing for the mail there, and it actually goes to Salt Lake before it comes back to Idaho. So the Secretary of State and the legislature didn't like that for campaign finance reporting. They've put in a provision, or they allow the city clerk to still accept hard copies over the counter in our office if the candidate files that way, if it can be demonstrated that the candidate is unable to fill out the forms, or the treasurer is unable to fill out the forms electronically. They've granted us a little bit of grace there to still accept them hard copy if we need to, but they don't really want us to. They are trying to move everyone towards the electronic system. So we have on our website, meridiancity.org/elections, you've seen it at the bottom of every slide, all of our forms are listed there. All of the campaign finance forms on our website are fillable, they're PDF-fillable. So you can type in your name, type in the amount, and then you can save them to your computer, print them out, scan them, and email them to us. That is the preferred way of receiving them. So you don't need to handwrite them in. In fact, the state doesn't even accept, I don't think, handwritten ones anymore, even if those are sent through the portal. They have to be electronically filled out. So emailing them or faxing them to us is how they want us to accept them. If you have questions about that, if you have concerns about that, more than happy to talk with you about that, to work with you on that, if there are concerns moving forward with submitting your forms electronically, emailing them to us, or faxing them to us. Are there any restrictions on the use of campaign funds? Yes, there are restrictions to use of campaign funds, is the short way of saying that right there. So it's unlawful for campaign funds to be converted, excuse me, to personal use. This means any expense that would exist irrespective of the candidate's election campaign or a successful candidate's duties as an office holder, no personal use. And it's in small writing there that basically says that you can't go out and buy country club memberships, or pay your car payments, or do anything associated with personal use, that campaign funds need to be used for the election, for campaigning, and you can use funds, if you're successful in your election, in your campaign, towards some of the duties of your office, your official office, but nothing, no personal funds, or no personal use. Excess campaign funds may be transferred to any non-charitable organization, nonprofit, excuse me, nonprofit charitable organization, civic, religious, fraternal, patriotic, or veterans organization, volunteer fire department, rescue squad, school booster group, or parent-teacher organization. Essentially, if it's charitable, you can transfer your campaign funds to that organization. And again, if you're looking to close out your campaign accounts, that's a good way to do that. May have an extension on the due date to file a report? We already talked about this. No, the law does not grant the city clerk the ability to grant extensions on filing reports. And when and under what circumstance can reporting be terminated? We talked about this a little bit. But you may terminate reporting only when there's a zero balance reported on your C-2 Any question? I know we went through a lot of information, campaign finance reporting. Our office is here to help you with the process, to help your treasurer with the process, to answer any questions that you or your treasurer might have. Everything that we went through with this PowerPoint is going to be on our website tomorrow. This video will be on our website tomorrow, if you are so inclined to watch it again to get the information. But we're here to ensure that this part of the process, the campaign finance part, the filing, the declaration of candidacy, all the paperwork associated with campaigning is as easy and seamless as possible. We're here to help make sure that you don't have to really worry much about that part of the process, so you can go out and do what you need to do during the election, during the campaign. Do you have any questions?
One more thing. Again, my name's Bill Neri. My office number is 208-898-5506. So if you have a question that may come up, I can't give you legal advice, but I may be able to answer your question if something comes up that you're unsure of, or you can always email me at beaneri@meridiancity.org, and I can answer as quickly as I can. But again, I can't provide you legal advice, but I may be able to answer a question that may come up in the midst of your campaigning.
Thanks, Bill. JC, anything from an experienced city clerk that maybe I had missed during presentation? That one on?
Yes. What I've done in the past is, once you certify your treasurer, we know you're a candidate. I've created just kind of an Outlook contact group of the campaign finance treasurers and the candidates. We blind copy when we send out emails. We're not giving everybody else each other's email addresses, even though it is on all the forms that are online, but some people get a little bit freaky about that, so get nervous when we're sending their email around. So what we have done in the past, and I'll encourage CJ to also do through this election cycle, is reminders. Just kind of, you know, as that first deadline's coming up, we usually send a reminder saying, "Hey, here's the reporting period. It actually ends on this date, and then it's due this date." And we try to help as much as possible.